Welcome back to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of April 21st. The next item on the agenda is the study session. Tonight, we will be discussing BioInspire and their accomplishments, which are many.
Indeed, and as they're coming up, I'll just introduce it a little bit more. BioInspire and its offshoot BioAsal are our primary bio-incubator in the city. And it's been a real success since we started it some time ago, spinning off a number of different startups, which was exactly the goal. And now that they're up, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to be before you again. And I wanted to start off introducing somebody who needs no introduction, but I feel compelled to do it anyway, and that's Mary Ann Guerrero, who is the CEO of BioAsal, the nonprofit entity that we contract with to run our BioInspire medical device incubator. And then also, we have Ron King, who is with us as well, and he's -- both of them are obviously very important and integral to the success of BioInspire, so I wanted to make an introduction. So what we're here to do tonight, as we have done in the past with other councils, is to provide a status and update report as to what are we accomplishing at BioInspire, where are we going, how are things going, and, you know, give you an opportunity to ask whatever questions that you might have. So tonight's really a progress report discussion on the activity. So what I thought I would start with, though, is a quick overview, some quick backdrop. BioInspire, of course, is a direct output from the Economic Development Implementation Strategy. That was one of the objectives of the EDIS, was the establishment of a medical device incubator, so that we could create the type of bioscience jobs and ultimately clusters, so that we could grow an innovation and technology platform for our city. The success of BioInspire is rooted in our partnerships, because everything we do in economic development is catered on partners. So BioAsal, who is a nonprofit organization that's expert in accelerating technologies, is a pivotal partner in the success of BioInspire, but also the Plaza Companies. The Plaza Companies is the entity to whom we have a lease for space, 6,800 square feet of space for the actual BioInspire facility. So among the city, BioAsal, and Plaza Companies, that is the partnership that came together to enable BioInspire to move forward. So BioInspire was really created to establish a bioscience presence in Peoria that previously didn't exist. So coming on the heels of adopting the EDIS, there was a desire to have bioscience-type companies and jobs in the city that wouldn't naturally come here. So there was a decision point. Either we say, "Okay, well, that's not going to happen, let's try something different," or "Let's grow it our own. Let's do something bold and innovative and chart our own course." And the council, to its credit, chose the latter. So all of the successes that you're going to hear tonight is because of the city councils that have been in place, and now including this one, that have enabled BioInspire to go forward. Keeping in mind that it's a long-term program. You know, we're starting from -- we started from scratch with a startup concept, and so this takes time. But our long-term program is to grow medical device clusters in Peoria over time. And we know that we need to reach national and international markets in order to be successful. And so part of what Mary Ann will be talking about tonight includes the national and international markets that they've been able to penetrate in order to promote BioInspire. BioInspire did not come without risk, and we spent a lot of study session time with councils before we entered into the agreement with BioAsal. We have always realized, and so I thought it would be good to reiterate the risk profile that we have with BioInspire. There's a commercialization risk. And what I mean by that is this, you know, what BioInspire seeks to do, and Mary Ann will be going into more detail in this and her portion of the presentation, is to take medical device, technology, innovation, ideas, and to commercialize it. But there's no guarantee that that is going to commercialize. There's no guarantee that that's going to cross the finish line. And so you take a risk by bringing in companies and putting in all the hard work that BioAsal puts into it, in terms of, you know, meeting their company milestones and overcoming FDA hurdles and all of that. But at the end of the day, there's no guarantee that these companies will commercialize. There's a company startup risk, okay? So once these companies go through BioInspire, and they graduate, so to speak, they're a startup company. And like any startup company, they can fail. But they can also succeed. And so we just need to, you know, be mindful that there's absolutely startup risk for the companies that come out of our incubator. There's company buyout risk, meaning that those companies that have a really good business plan, really good technology plan, and a great healthcare solution, they might be bought out by larger companies before they even get out of BioInspire, which on the one hand validates that what we're doing is good work. But at the end of the day, there is a risk that companies can get bought out. And then there, of course, for the city, in terms of the resources we put into this project, there's opportunity cost, you know, because those are funds that could be used in another way, doing a different project. So these are the same risk criteria that we've talked about with past councils, but I just wanted to bring them up, so everybody has the same information going forward. So as I've answered in the past to the question of, "Is there risk?", absolutely. But the question is not, "Is there risk?", but "How are we managing the risk?". And so there's a number of things that we do in order to manage the risk, one of which Mary Ann's going to speak to in her segment of the presentation, is our council of advisors. There's a council of advisors that's in place that is representative of venture capitalists, that's representative of industry representatives, and key players in the medical device industry that weigh in heavily in terms of the companies that are invested in and allowed to come into the incubator. So that is a major validation point, that any company or any funding for a company goes through the BioInspire Council of Advisors, and the council of advisors deliberates and decides yes, no, conditional yes, as to whether they come in or not. The city actively monitors BioAsal, and that's a joint effort between the Economic Development Services Department and the Finance Department, to go out and look at records, look at books of accounts, and make sure that, you know, our funds are being used in the manner in which they are intended. We also have legal reviews that are going on to evaluate contracts and other agreements that are reached between BioAsal and the portfolio companies, to make sure the city's interests are protected, and to make sure that everything, from a due diligence perspective, that should be happening is happening. We also have financial reviews from outside audit firms that occur, to go out and look at, again, the accounting systems. Is it recognizing receipts and expenditures properly? Is it tying to all the records of the city and all of that? Progress reports to the city council, like this, is another way to ensure that we're managing the risk. We've worked into all agreements that companies that benefit from BioInspire, whether from the space, the services, or the funding, should they not locate in Peoria by either being bought out by a larger company, or just not locating here, that the city gets repaid the funds that it invested in it. So at the end of the day, as a loan agreement condition, if they don't locate in Peoria, then they have to repay the funds. We've also established loan underwriting guidelines that BioAsal follows, in terms of making sure that loans are underwritten to a reasonable manager standard. And so that becomes really important to, again, manage the risk. And then, of course, BioAsal's due diligence process and all of the steps they go through to make sure that there's the right science, it's the right healthcare solution, it's the right company, it's the right company composition, even before it gets to the council of advisors. So we put enough, so to speak, belts and suspenders on this to, I think, manage the risk in a reasonable way. So now that we have all of that behind us, I'm going to just take a quick break and see if we have any questions on anything so far.
No questions.
Okay. Going forward then, just a quick chronology. You know, council approved a five-year operating grant agreement with BioAsal in November of 2011. 2011, November, also council approved a lease. That's our lease with the Plaza Companies. So during the spring of '12, tenant improvements were being done to the space to make it the state-of-the-art facility that it is today, including all the lab facilities and office facilities and conference facilities. The city issued the certificate of occupancy in August, and we had our grand opening in September of '12. So for all intents and purposes, the facility and the program has been operational since September of '12. Now, there's a lot of work that BioAsal did prior to that, but to put a pin in the calendar, that, I think, is a reasonable point in time as to when we should start looking at, okay, what's been done in the two and a half years since that point in time. One thing I would mention also on the five-year agreement, that in November of '16, that agreement will be coming up, and so we'll be returning to council to see, you know, again, more progress reports, and ultimately to decide whether this is an agreement that we want to extend for a longer duration or not. So when we look at some dashboard metrics, just some kind of high-level metrics to give you a sense of where we are, now, these are BioAsal expenses since March of 2012. So as I mentioned, the facility really opened in late September of '12. But when you look at the total city funds that have been expended by BioAsal for operations, the operations of the facility, all of the due diligence, all of the services, all of the networking, all of the FDA compliance, all of the stuff that BioAsal does as a service provider, it's $2.1 million. When you look at the total city funds expended by BioAsal for company seed loans, okay, so let me take a moment and explain that. One of the defining elements of our program that not many, if perhaps any at all, do is offer seed loans. And that's really the key, I think, to the success, because any company that's going through the commercialization process needs to have access to funds in order to move their technology through the commercialization process. And so we, the city, then transfer funds to BioAsal for these seed loans. And what's been expended by BioAsal today, since March of '12, is about $2.2 million. Now, those funds aren't all spent at one time, they're spent in increments based on milestone accomplishments of the companies. But that's the number in terms of the seed, company seed loans that have been expended by BioAsal since March of '12. So the sum of which is the total for BioAsal to date at $4.3 million. As of 2015, jobs created by BioInspire companies is 39, and we'll be talking a little bit later on in this slide about what's the economic impact of that. But what I wanted to draw your attention to, again, for a startup incubator that's only two and a half plus or minus years into operation, is that BioAsal's been able to leverage non-city funds for operations of $1.1 million, and $12.9 million in non-city funds for downstream investment in these companies. Usually, you would expect startups to run a negative, with what we're talking startups, and here they are, leveraging $3.21 private to $1 city investment, when you add up all the non-city funds that have been brought into the program as compared to city funds So what we did, so let me stop there. Are there any questions on any of the numbers?
Questions, discussion? Keep going.
So what we did is we had Elliot Pollak do an economic impact study of just what BioInspire has accomplished during the period of time that the incubator's been opened. And so just looking at 2015, with the 39 jobs that have been created as direct jobs, the study shows a total direct economic impact of $7.179 million, just in direct impacts. I excluded indirect and induced, because I wanted to have a more conservative number. So I think what that suggests to me is that we're on track. Now, what's different about this slide as compared to the prior one, is that the prior one reflected what BioAsal had expended. This slide shows what the city has expended, and I'll explain the differences. So as you saw on the prior slide, that BioAsal had expended $2167 for operations, the city's actually expended $2.4 million. And the difference, as noted in the asterisk, is that $252,000 and $234 at the bottom of the slide, an additional capital outlay for the building furniture fixtures and equipment. That's the differential on, in terms of what the city has spent to BioAsal versus what BioAsal has spent in its operations and to portfolio companies. The larger difference, looking here at the company seed loans of $2.2 million in terms of what BioAsal has spent for company investment versus the $3.4 million that the city has given to BioAsal, is what I mentioned, is that if we give BioAsal a lump sum of money to have cash on hand to make loans, they don't spend all of that at one time, because companies are expected to reach milestones, performance metrics, and so those funds aren't fully expended until those milestones are reached. And so that's one reason why you have the difference in the funding amount between what the city has provided to BioAsal versus what BioAsal has spent in its operations and for seed loans. So when you look at it from the city's perspective, in terms of what has gone out of our door, it's $5.8 million. Then you add up the $442,000 that's been spent for the rent that goes to the Plaza Companies, you get to the $6.2. So again, $6.2 compared to the $7.1 in terms of direct total economic impact, we're to the plus $900K. Does that make sense? Any questions on the numbers?
I think we're good.
Okay. So with that, let me turn it over to Mary Ann, who's going to talk in more detail about the accomplishments, what it's meant to the city, and what the future holds for us.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you all for inviting us to give you an update. Congratulations to the new council members and Mayor Colette. You've been terrific. This has been an extraordinary council and an extraordinary experience for us in taking a novel idea and being able to grow it and do something with it. So we really appreciate the support we've got. Scott has done an amazing job, and I just always have to commend Scott. I think the city of Peoria is very, very lucky to have an economic development manager like Scott. I've worked with and see a lot of cities, but Scott's skill, his thoughtfulness, his ability to take risks and manage those risks is really phenomenal. And so I'm sure you all know that, but I just want to tell you from our perspective, it's, you're really very, very lucky to have Scott. We've accomplished a lot, and I want you all to be excited about what we've accomplished. Scott's done a terrific job, but actually, I could probably quit now, because he's really gone over a lot of, lot of the information on the programs and that. But we started out with a blank slate, and we've rolled out quite a bit in a very short amount of time. And I think what Scott has indicated is, it's not just building a building or putting a building together. Actually, that would have been really easy. What's been really the challenge and what we've integrated is setting up the infrastructure, the underlying principles that Scott mentioned, the underwriting guidelines, the councils, the review, the diligence, the balancing risk with oversight. And we've done it thoughtfully, we've improved upon it, but I think that it's something that really needs to be recognized, because what we have took quite a bit of time to get all of the pieces in place to be able to, you know, pull the trigger, you just couldn't do it very quickly. So I'll talk a little bit about that. The other thing I think that I really want to mention is, as a council, how you should feel very proud of what's, what you're doing. And the risks that have been mentioned, but the investment that's been made, is something that needs to be done across the United States. I was appointed last year to the, by Secretary Pritzker, to her National Advisory Council for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. And so I get to go to Washington three or four times a year. And the entire focus is, how do we stimulate new company formation in the space that we're going to talk about today? And so, and we were, I was selected to be on the council because of what BioAsal is doing and the novel approach that we have to solving this problem. So, and that's a product of what we're doing at BioInspire. So it's what you're doing, what you've approved, what you're trying, is something that many across the United States are trying to do, but I think we've recognized it doing it a little bit better than others. So I think you need to pat yourselves on the back for what we've been accomplishing and what we've been recognized for at the national level. Many times when I give talks, this is the only slide that I give, it won't be the only one I give today, but I do want to say, this is the BioAsal model that you're seeing in front of you. And it's a model that we've embedded in BioInspire. And I think that that's really important to understand, that we tested the model first before we created the relationship with the city of Peoria, and then we embedded what we had learned into the model that we have here. We call it an integrated approach to economic development, and we truly believe that what we're doing is accelerating that concept to commerce. So I wanted to spend some time, so you could really understand what we're trying to do here, and why we're doing what we're doing, and let you ask any questions if you have it, because this is really the nuts and bolts of what we're doing and why it's so important. But if you want to have diversified economic growth, which you see at the bottom, improved health outcomes, and you want to have a strong entrepreneurial community, you have to create a comprehensive ecosystem to make that happen. I will say that the city of Peoria had a little bit more of a challenge than maybe some other communities have, because while we were launching this, you were also trying to recruit universities here, trying Huntington, you were trying to build a whole entity or industry that didn't exist here. And so we really started, when we said the blank slate, it wasn't just creating an incubator, but we were creating a whole new economic sector here for the city of Peoria. And I think we've made progress. We have a ways to go, but through the combination of the programs we've put in place, and what you've done as a city to bring in these other components, I think we really have the foundation to build, and now to accelerate, because you, sometimes you have to start slowly, and then all of a sudden, you hit that tipping point and things move along. And I think we're quickly getting to the tipping point. I know Dr. King and I, we've noticed how, that we've had successes now, the recognition and more interest in people calling us, and, you know, people outside the state, LA County is calling and saying, "How are you doing that over there in Peoria? What are you doing there?". So, you know, you really are, we've really set a model here. But if you look at this, you want to get as quickly as you can from discovery into commercialization. In the biosciences, those three rings that you see in the middle, how do you validate, how do you develop, and how do you verify? It's a little bit more difficult in the biosciences, because as part of what we're doing here in medical devices, you have critical issues such as IP, intellectual property that you need to protect, you have a regulatory process that you need to engage in, those things take time and they cost money. And so for a biotech company, a device company that we're starting here, they've got some additional challenges and hurdles that they have to face. But if we can do it better and smarter, if we can get them from that, that point of discovery into commercialization more quickly, then we win. We invest, we have less dollars we have to invest, and we get to selling products and we get to jobs faster than anybody else. And that's really what our model is all about. We're taking out the risk as best we can, from both a business and a technical perspective, for the companies that are here. And the reason you could see $12 million of downstream investment is because those that are looking at what we're doing and saying, "Should I invest?", are looking at that risk mitigation that's been put in place and saying, "This is a better investment than somewhere else, because those risks have been taken out. They're already dealing with these IP issues, they're already dealing with regulatory", and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So I always give the analogy, I'll give it to the new council members, but this is a relay race. So imagine your team, imagine, you know, recruiting across the United States and finding the best team members that you can put on the team, but if you don't have the handoff, so if we don't get through all of those rings that are sitting in front of you, or you drop the baton, you lose the race. And what we're trying to do is make sure we never drop the baton, and we move it along as fast as we can. And that's what that model represents. Now, how much is this worth? Scott's giving you some numbers, they're great numbers, but if you look at startup companies, just recently, I have heard between 60 and 80% of all new jobs come from starting-up companies. The next thing that benefits a local community is expanding the companies that you have. So you really want to look at, how do we get new things going, and how do we build the things that are already here? And I think when I look at your strategic plan and what you're doing, the city is doing both of those. But it's true value, there's a statistic that's out by the Kaufman Foundation and the Council of Innovation out of New York, and they have looked at this, and they said, "If, after looking at 145 research institutes across the United States, you can get 6% more from the concept into commercialization, 6% more of that technology to the point of commercialization, it has a minimum of a $1.4 trillion impact on the GDP, up to a $3 trillion impact on the GDP." So that is why you're investing in what you're doing. The numbers are staggering, even for anybody who likes big numbers, those are big numbers. So that's why you're doing what you're doing. And the other thing that I think is really important is to know that you, once you get something going, you start to attract. So the incubator, BioInspire, is like a magnet. Once you get things going, you attract better companies, you attract universities, you attract mentors, business people, you attract manufacturing, you attract the services that support all of those, and before you know it, it definitely has the snowballing effect, where it's just a little thing, and then all of a sudden, it's a giant entity and that's impacting your whole community. And I believe that's what we've got going now. It's really, you can see the ripple effect starting to happen. So Scott has talked about the programs that we have in place. So we, the first ring that you saw was the technology validation. We have a proof-of-concept program where we make sure a company's technology is validated, so that that's the technical risk. And many times when a novel idea comes out of an entrepreneur, out of the university, they don't take that next step, they just want to be off and running. We make sure that somebody out there has looked at, validated, that there's a customer to buy the product, that the cost of manufacturing of getting it to market makes sense. Will it ever get through the regulatory process? All of these things that sometimes you don't want the answer to when you're an entrepreneur, we make sure we get the answers to, because our philosophy is, let's either succeed, you know, well, or fail rapidly, because we don't want to waste your money. And that's when you hear about the tranching of the dollars, all of this is built on, let's do this very intelligently, let's move it as fast as we can, but in a very intelligent way. The next thing we do is, if a technology has gotten through proof of concept, the next ring that you saw in the middle was, we need to seed the company. So the investments, the loans that Scott has talked about, is then we put money in, up to $300,000, to seed those companies. And all of that is milestone-based, okay? So they have to put in a work plan, they have to tell us what they're going to do, they have to tell us how much money it's going to take, and then we give them that money, little by little. And as you probably all know, money is a great incentive to make progress. And so you start to see them really moving quickly from that concept to commerce, because they want the money. They want to move it along. And the faster they move it along, the more attractive they are to downstream capital, because we're reducing that timeframe, that valley of death that they're in, we're reducing the time they have to spend there, or the depth with which they have to go into that valley. We're trying to keep them smooth and efficient. The other thing that Scott didn't mention is, we're trying to build in a self-sustainability model. The IRS allowed us to hold equity in the companies as a nonprofit, as long as any return on investment that we get at BioAsal goes back into BioAsal and creates an Evergreen Fund. And so we're working with the city to have that Evergreen Fund, where these companies, basically, if we're successful, it goes back in, and then we're seeding more and more good companies to come to the city of Peoria. And hopefully, over time, you'll just be seeing the positive end of the investment and not the investment, having to continue to do the investment. So that's our goal, so that you know that the tin cup So that's our goal, so that you know that the tin cup hopefully will go away at some point in time in the future. We don't like having to go out and raise nonprofit dollars as well, so we love the model that actually is self-sustaining. How did we do this? And how do we have as close as we can come to a crystal ball as we can? It's, it's not easy. This is a high-risk endeavor that you're in, and Scott's mentioned that, I will mention that, because it's, we really want to be transparent. This group of council members that we have, it's from across the US. And if you look at the type of membership that you have, you've got HLM Partners, which is a large investment, venture capital fund out of Boston. They're chairing our committee. He comes from Boston to Peoria to do this. I mean, that's a big investment, and you have to say, why would you do that? You know, unless they saw things in the pipeline that they're interested in investing in. And that's where you see downstream capital. You've got Medtronic and Gore. Those are the couple of the largest med, medical device companies that you have in the United States and in the world. They're looking at the technologies that are coming through. You've got a local folks, molded devices and a manufacturer, GE Ventures out of San Francisco. Everybody knows GE. These are significant players in what we're trying to do in medical devices, both in terms of industry, strategic partners, venture capitalists, manufacturers who can also help us invest and reduce costs to manufacturing. And then Blue Cross Blue Shield just set up a new fund, that they are going to actually be investing in health-related companies. So they just joined the council. Another group that is potentially that third ring, which is that investment, how do we get that early investment so that our companies don't miss anything, they move along? And when they're ready for the next step, there's money there available. And that money comes from all different sources. It comes from you, it comes from angels, it comes from venture, it comes from strategics. And we've got them all right there on the council, and we meet at least three or four times a year, minimum three, sometimes four if we have to. They approve everything. So if they don't approve it, it doesn't happen. They set the milestones, they help us set the milestones. We then translate all of that into an agreement with the company, under which we have the terms and conditions that we've addressed to meet the city's priorities, and then we hold them accountable for those. If they don't reach their milestones, they don't get the funding, and they have to explain to us what happened. So I think this is an incredibly valuable group for many different purposes, and I think you'll, you understand why. It's not just a review committee. It's much bigger than a review committee, because these are the people that are going to make sure that these companies succeed. And if you sit in any of these meetings, and any of you are welcome to come, the advice they give to these companies, their strategic thinking, what that company should do next, you know, as an entrepreneur, you want to go in this direction, it's the easy direction. They'll tell you, no, you need to go in this direction, this is the best use of funds. We know you don't want to go to the FDA, the Food and Drug Administration for regulatory. That's what you have to do, because that, you need to have that validation before anybody else is going to invest. So they make sure that everything that we're doing is as intelligent and as smart as we can possibly do for the investment that we're making in these companies. Now, what have we done? Scott mentioned, we've got 39 jobs to date in the companies. Our average salary for the employees there is higher than, substantially higher, I will say, than the average in Arizona at 70,800. We're increasing the occupancy of the facility in 59% in '13, up to 94% in '15. We've got a great pipeline of companies we're looking at. So, and Scott mentioned again, when we have seed money, we don't invest that seed money till we find something that we like. And so if it sits there until we find the right company, then it sits there. We have a Solutions Challenge event coming up, you're all invited to it, it's May 15th. We would really encourage you to do that. We started that event to create an ecosystem, a better ecosystem, but it's also was created to develop a pipeline of investable companies that could come out here to the city of Peoria as well. So we can give you more details on that. We've mentioned that you had a $12.9 million follow-on investment, so resulting in substantial leveraging of the city's investment. If you look at when they came into the company, and we track all of this stuff on a quarterly basis, so when you, when they came into the company, what their valuation was, what's their valuation to date. So basically, the current value is over 64 million, that's a 229% increase from when those companies came into the accelerator. These are really significant numbers, and these are, if you hear about incubators, or you look at university data, you're not going to see these numbers reported, because they don't track, you know, how much investment happens, is the company still in existence? Because these are the hard things to do. It's easy to set up a company, it's hard to keep a company successful. And then the Economic Development Agency just awarded us, at the end of March, a grant for $500,000 to develop entrepreneurship based on our model. And so we're very excited about that. And of course, the interns, last year, we had 15 interns at the incubator working, and that's going to develop the pipeline. They were unpaid, we might be able to give them a few pennies this year. The national, international, we're recognized across the US, but our companies are attracting folks from across the United States, they're looking at products, investments from all over. Some of the last investments we had, one was from Texas, one was from California. When you look at the markets, we're looking at a company now from Australia, we're looking at two companies from Israel, we've got a company from Canada, they're all looking at, should they come here? What's the benefit of being here? Those companies are also looking at, you know, not only potentially residing here, but also in terms of future manufacturing. So we've got, the, the growth and the touch is really increasing. What's next? You know, the opportunities are endless, but we have to focus, because the funding is not. So what's going to make us a better facility? Regulatory is just a huge piece of what we do. Because if we can get these companies through the FDA faster and at less cost, that means that company, again, is going to be more likely to get downstream capital and get to market faster. I was on the phone today with the company that's out of Korea, they're on their last at-bat at the regulatory process, and they're, they're going to probably fail. They're using somebody else, they're not using us. They were asking us to look at their package, because they wanted to try to get their last shot on goal, if they could do it. We think that they're probably not going to be successful, and that means they're going to have to start all over, or license it to somebody else to start the process. The company we're looking at from Israel was working with somebody and is now looking at working with us to do the regulatory piece of this. If we can embed that regulatory piece as part of our incubator, one is we will be the only incubator probably in the United States that does that. And two, if you look at the cost of the hourly rate for regulatory, it's like, if you're lucky, $350 to $450 an hour to get regulatory input, regulatory dollars. We think we could bring that down to probably under $200, which means we're going to be the best buy in town for people to want to come, and we have a pretty good track record for the success. That again makes, Peoria makes the incubator special.
Can I jump in there just a second?
Yeah.
And just to kind of explain why that's important, you know, when I mentioned that we are one of the few, if not the only, programs that offer the robust seed loans that, that Mary Ann mentioned, that became a major differentiator, and that's why we got the looks that we have in terms of companies. Because if you're a company and you need this assistance, and you can go to one incubator, and all you get are services and no funding, but you can come over here and get services and funding, then you're likely to come over to Peoria. And that's, that's important for us in terms of market share, that's important for us in terms of, of promoting who we are and what we can do. And then if we can add the regulatory compliance piece that Mary Ann just mentioned, then you add one more piece of uniqueness, one more piece of value add to our program that you don't necessarily find anyplace else. So you get even more looks at your, your program for those companies that couldn't get that perhaps someplace else. So it's all about, how much can you do that's different and unique, and adds to, adds the value to the company, that then makes us more important as a location for the companies?
The other thing is how we approach it strategically. So as I said many times, the companies prefer to delay their FDA approval. Do I have my, yeah, delay their FDA approval. If they delay their FDA approval, it definitely impacts whether anybody is going to fund them, because that's a big risk in an already risky business. Our approach is, let's address that head-on, and let's reduce the cost. So if we can do it cheaper, not less, you know, no less than quality, better quality at less expense, for the company, that is a huge value add to their company and the downstream investment. That also means they're going to get to market faster, because they're going to already have achieved that regulatory hurdle. It also means if they don't get it, you don't waste your money on downstream investment. So it's really smart to say, how do we do this? The other thing that we're approaching is, instead of just going to the US, we look at Canada and we look at Europe at the same time. If you can go to those organizations, those certifying bodies, and get the path laid out that's required for a worldwide approval, then you also streamline everything, the clinical trials, anything that's related, you do it once, instead of doing it once for Canada, once for Europe, once for the United States. That's just a duplicative cost, and they're doing it sequentially, which means it's going to take longer. If we can do it all at one time in a very intelligent way, then we, again, reduce that timeline, reduce the cost, get to market faster. And that's what we're embedded, that's the uniqueness that we're embedding. We do that also for intellectual property. Our approach is, make them go for an accelerated approval at the patent office, so their patents are issued faster, rather than waiting for their patents to be issued in three or four years. Again, that's a risk for any investor, if you don't have issued patents. So really flipping around the paradigm for how we're doing things. Tied to that is like manufacturing, which is the third bullet on the slide. All of these companies need to have their product manufactured. So we're looking and working with Scott too, how can we get some of that manufacturing established here locally, so that they don't have to go someplace else? It's also tied to the regulatory. Those products have to be compliant. So many times, they will design a product, and then it won't meet the manufacturing and the compliance don't hook up. We're trying to eliminate that, so they don't have that, oh my goodness, at the end, we find that at the beginning, and we avoid those downstream problems. So this is a very, very thoughtful approach, and every time we go through with the company, we learn something, we add that value add to what we're doing here, to make this really different and unusual. And again, I think that from a national perspective, that's being recognized. The, the second bullet on the entrepreneurship program was actually something that we wanted to do, and we plan to do regardless. The fact that we just got the EDA grant to be able to help get that done is really a bonus, because we would, we would have had to do it on a shoestring, now we get to do it with good funding and good resources.
And I'm sorry, if I can just chime in again real fast, on the, on the second bullet that deals with the entrepreneur, again, goes back to some of the things we've talked about in the EDAs, about workforce development. You know, so if we can, through the different component parts of the incubator, create the FDA value proposition and the, the seed funding value proposition, and then that attracts company looks, and then we can show that through these efforts, a workforce that then can support these companies. That then is going to help us even more in terms of the ultimate goal, the downstream goal of growing these clusters. Because as a company, then, that is expanding out, out of the incubator, you want to be able to have the workforce that can help you be successful, and the manufacturing space to do your manufacturing. So it all starts to kind of weave in together, as, as we kind of go into the second half of this contract.
And the Gore, for example, and Medtronic, both have primary sites here in Arizona, they are very concerned with workforce development. And the interns, the entrepreneurs, the students that we train, that they come out with hands-on experience, actually helps really develop a workforce that's not available here in Arizona. You have the academic training, but you don't have the hands-on. When you talk about a compliance system, they read it in a book. When they came out and did their internship this summer, they actually had to help implement a compliance system for one of the companies. They actually had to develop a catheter and, and test it. These are things that really change, you know, you read it in the book to the reality, and the students were saying, you know, wow, we didn't realize. It's a lot harder to do the real thing than to, to do the book thing. So I think this is really, again, something special and unique that we have to offer. In summary, and I want to make sure you have the time to ask questions, but in a, what we think is a relatively short period of time, we've executed a fully operational medical device incubator, so started from scratch and have it recognized at a national level. We've created new high-wage jobs. We have an opportunity to build on that and create manufacturing related to those companies, as well as manufacturing beyond those companies. We actually have some of the companies that are looking at manufacturing are, because of the regulatory piece that we're doing, that won't even be in the incubator, they're just attracted to come here because of other things that we have to offer. The global opportunities are really, they're just opening up daily. Every time we, we, we look at what we're doing and the ability to do some of this regulatory, the biggest challenge for companies coming into the US and wanting to be here is the regulatory. If they can get somebody to help them do that, they have much more interest, and they actually have financing many times to help do that. And so we, we also believe that we have brought to Peoria industry, we've brought well-known industry to see what we're doing here, we've brought venture capital, we have the, building up the ecosystem in a way that others aren't. And so I think in the, the timeframe that we've, we've been operating, we've done a lot, we think there's a lot more to do. It's frankly easier to do it with Scott, he's been, like I said, terrific in terms of understanding that balance between risk and potential. And we're hoping that in the next five years, some of these investments that you will see will turn into substantive return on the investment. We know that they will. The other good news is, right now, none of the companies have dropped out. And if you look at the statistics from the angel groups where they report, you know, one out of 10 startup companies fails. Right now, the fact is, we have all of our companies still operating. And so, as Scott mentioned earlier, there's an expectation that some of these companies are going to fail. At this point, our companies are still staying in the game, and the longer they stay in the game, the more chance they're going to be successful.
Because we know that's a lot of information, and you probably have a lot of questions, we wanted to make sure that there was ample time left before regular session starts to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Gwer, excellent report. I think that your numbers and your programs are really very impressive. My question is, when an organization comes to you and wants to, say, pitch their product, do they meet before the Council of Advisors and talk about what it is that they want to accomplish?
I can answer that, or do you have more to the question?
Yeah, well, my question is, is how do you determine, what criteria do you use to determine whether they, companies should be approved or denied the opportunity to work with BioInspire?
That's a very good question. So we have an open recruitment, so anybody can apply to the programs at any time. And we did that purposefully, so we don't want to miss an opportunity by saying you have to apply by a certain date. Ron, Dr. King oversees the diligence process, and he actually, there's like 178, I think, variables that they look at when they go through the process, IP, regulatory position, you know, has, has the technology been validated? We actually do a screen of the individuals to see what they've done, where they've come from, are they solid citizens? So we look at persons, technology, personalities, we actually have them do a personality assessment of the team. I mean, we look at every single facet of that organization that we can from day one. We then go out to external technical folks and external business people to give us their input. Having gone through all of that, then we make an assessment whether we want to pursue further. If we decide that they go through that piece of it, we then go through actually hiring external firm that digs very, very deep in the IP, and looks what's called a competitive analysis, freedom to operate, to make sure that even if they have a patent, or they have a patent pending, because most of them are patent pending, that, that if, they're not going to be blocked by some other patent. So we go through that process, and at that point in time, if we think it looks good, and we've talked to them, they've met with us, Ron goes back and forth many times with the companies before we get them to the council. Then we prepare a whole package for the council, based on everything that we've discovered. We give them a written report. We also make sure, based on the underwriting guidelines that the city of Peoria has put in place that we follow, we look at an economic development, are they going to create jobs? What's their chance of staying there? So we, we go through that whole economic impact assessment that's part of the package. All of that goes to the council, then the council meets usually physically, and the company presents to the council, so the council has company presents to the council, so the council has an opportunity to ask questions. And then at that point in time, they'll send us their comments, and if they like it, then we draft the milestones and everything. So it's a pretty comprehensive process to get through.
Because we have a lot of new council members, would you mind going back and telling us why you decided on the niche of medical device?
I'll take a stab at it, and then I'll turn it over to Mary Ann. You know, one of the things, when we were noodling this, what we wanted to do, I think first and foremost, was to shorten the length of time that it takes a company to get to commercialization. So when you look at bioscience broadly, there's medical device, there's pharmaceutical, there's other applications. Medical device has the shortest FDA approval timeline. If you go to other spaces in bioscience, you get into much longer FDA approval timelines, and that all leads then to a longer period of time before the companies come out of the incubator. That was one of the key ones from my perspective, and I know, Mary Ann, you had some thoughts on that as well.
So when we started this, you know, it wasn't exactly the best financial times that we were existing in, so again, kudos to the city for investing at a very difficult time. But we also looked at, how could we create a sustainable device organization here in the city of Peoria? So you look at, if they have to do clinical studies, who uses many devices? You have an elder community for clinical trials, this is a beautiful area to be able to have patients for those studies. If you go down the street, you see eyes, nose, ears, you know, ankles, whatever, you see clinics for everything. That's good in terms of the devices and what we're trying to develop here. At the same time, while everything else was declining in the bioscience industry, medical devices was the only industry that actually grew during the recession. When you look at the venture capital that comes into the state, it's the second largest area of venture capital that was coming into the state. If you look at what could you build on, you had Gore, you had Bard, and you had Medtronic. So we actually had a little bit of a foothold in the state to grow on. So all of those combined, we determined that would be the best chance of success with the regulatory addition as well, to be able to, as an area that we thought we could be successful in.
And you know, one other thing comes to mind in answer to that question, is we didn't want, we wanted to have 100% market share, and not having any other medical device incubator in the state gave us 100% market share, as opposed to starting an incubator that's serving, you know, the same population that three or four other incubators are also serving.
The differentiation was key for me, I remember at the time. Any other questions? Can you tell us about some of the grants and awards that some of the tenants, if you will, have received?
Okay, yeah, we're really proud of them. It's like having children that are successful. They cause you trouble too, but they are definitely, when they do something well, you get excited. So three of the companies received Arizona Commerce Authority awards of $250,000 non-dilutive dollars. One of the companies received the Governor's Innovation Company of the Year award. I think all of the companies have received FAST grants from ACA. They've received, Ron, what else? Have we gotten SBIRs? Am I leaving anything out?
Yeah.
So SBIR, Small Business Innovation Research Awards, that's SBIR from the federal government. So I think they've covered, we've gotten every single award. Oh, Flynn, Flynn Foundation has an award, one of our companies just got that one. So I think we've, every one of our companies have gotten some type of award, and we've gotten every award that Arizona has to offer for the companies.
That's great. Ms. Hatt?
Is it possible to take a tour of the facility?
Absolutely.
I'm sitting here just visualizing nothing, because I have no idea what it looks like. So.
Absolutely.
Most of us actually are new, or relatively new, so I would really like that.
Absolutely, we'd love to show it and talk to you and let you meet some of the folks, because they're the most interesting. When you look at the companies, you know, we could talk about it all day long, and I think the city just did a beautiful article for the Arizona Commerce Authority on what we're doing there. When I read it, I got excited about it, because it talked about, you know, novel contact lenses, I mean, that basically can change the whole way that the contact lens industry is approached. You wear a contact lens for five days with drops, and you don't need reading glasses for the next 12 months. I mean, that revolutionizes that industry, and they have their patents issued for presbyopia, which is the one that we're working on right now, but for myopia and glaucoma, patents issued, ready to go. This is like, you know, really exciting. We've got a company that is able to, through a device that they have, and obulating the renal nerves, eliminate high blood pressure. That's one that's going to take a long time to get through all the regulatory hurdles, but right now, it's a novel technology that just a handful of others are working on. A dental implant that's using new nanotechnology to have better binding implants for dental, that's a great little company, they're going through some clinical trials, looking good, just got a Series A financing. The company that I mentioned about, the obulating the renal nerve for hypertension, got a Series B financing. So these are, these are not, you know, just companies that are doing, you know, insignificant things. These are companies that, if they hit, could be game-changing. We're looking at, rolling out a new aesthetics company that's there, that will look at novel ways of bringing in medical devices with products to improve the aesthetic appearance. We're going to give Scott Still a run for its money, in terms of what we're doing. So a lot of exciting things that are going on, when you look at the companies that are, you know, you wouldn't think of, are right down the street from where you might live.
How many companies are there?
There's eight.
Eight.
I think a tour would be great.
Here's a slide that shows the companies and their position in the commercialization process.
And this slide's, I think, really important, because it visually shows you that where they came in was the light purple, and where, how quickly they've accelerated. And this is the exact slide that tells you, you know, if you incentivize them correctly, they move quickly. And so if you look at, actually, Yoliya Health is the one, that's the contact lens company, they are actually days away from their sales in Mexico. They've trained all the physicians, they've got their approval in Mexico, and they're going to be revenue generating. My Fuel Up has already started, they're an app for your phone, and they've already started getting subscriptions, so they're actually already revenue generating. So they're moving really quickly, and we, again, try to track this to show that, you know, the progress that's being made. Yoliya, we're really looking at trying to get their downstream capital to get them through the FDA process. We already took them to FDA, got some really good preliminary reviews, and now we just have to raise enough capital to do the heavy lifting behind the initial meeting with them.
And it's very exciting to speak to them directly. They are, they are just contagious in how excited they are to talk about their company.
They're the company that won the Governor's Innovation Award, the Arizona Commerce Authority, so they've, they're pretty, pretty well-recognized in the state, other states, other countries.
And I think, Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but Yoliya, they're looking to train doctors from Mexico here in Peoria for that device, for its use and launch in Mexico.
Right, they want to, the U.S. headquarters would be here, they have a head, an operation in Mexico. We have to get the FDA approval, but they'd rather have physicians trained in the United States than in Mexico, even though the technology was developed in Mexico. But we have to get the FDA approval, so we're really working hard to raise the additional capital. We didn't mention that we've actually set up a for-profit venture fund, so that that venture fund can come in behind everything the city does with additional investment, again, to accelerate that progress and that investment capital. And we've raised about $1 million on that fund right now to help get that done. And the other thing we shouldn't, we were working with Tryon University, they actually had classes out at the incubator, and then we're working with the Bioscience High School to look at how we could better integrate what we're doing with the community. So I don't want to leave that aside, because we're really excited about what, the new school is really outstanding, what's been developed, and we'd like to see more of the students get engaged in what we're doing as well. You had a question?
I do. That really excites me, getting involved with the schools. But Scott, even back to Yoliya, specifically, how does that benefit our city? There, we've grown them, we've nurtured them, and now they're going to Mexico. Is that what I understood?
No, they actually have an operation in Mexico. They came to Peoria because of what BioInspire has to offer. So they're looking to bring their, I correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Ann, they're looking to bring their U.S. operational headquarters here to Peoria.
It is here. Let me kind of answer that a different way. Because of the regulatory hurdles, it was easier for them to get their regulatory approval to sell their product in Mexico than it was in the United States. They, the bigger market for what they're doing is in the United States. So the idea was, their headquarters are here, they'll start revenue generation in Mexico, they do quality control here locally, and they want to do their training here, and so the, they're going to be here, and their headquarters for U.S. is here. They just took advantage of the fact they could start selling in another country because of the regulatory hurdles. And that's what we're trying to change around, is to try to get them to get their FDA's approval first, or simultaneously, rather than sequentially, so that we can benefit here. But no, their operation is here, and they're operating here, they're just trying to get capital by selling things in Mexico where they can sell it.
But at the end of the day, what our end goal here is, is to graduate commercialized companies that then locate in Peoria for the purposes of creating medical device companies in Peoria for a medical device cluster. So what you're hearing tonight is the progress report of the activities of those companies that are currently commercializing. So they haven't, if you will, graduated from the incubator yet. Okay, so our objective in supporting this is to graduate those companies that then can start up in Peoria, grow in Peoria, hire, you know, employees in Peoria. So what you see in this exhibit is kind of the launch sequence of coming in and then coming out of the incubator. But our net economic development objective is for them to locate, once they've become a startup, commercialized company, in Peoria. So then we get back to that risk profile slide. We realize that not every startup is going to succeed. We realize that not every company in the incubator is going to commercialize, and we realize that there would be some companies, because their technology, because of our assistance is so great, that they get bought out by other companies. So in those cases, where we don't realize our objective, because they don't locate in Peoria, then the funds that we provide those companies while they're in our incubator facility would be repaid to us.
Plus, one of the, I should not fail to mention this, but the, one of the key ophthalmologists that's been part of the technology and advancing the technology is in Peoria, and actually saw the BioInspire sign and came to us and talked to us about building and getting access to this technology. So it, that's a beautiful success story, because we moved them from California, because of them seeing the sign, BioInspire, coming to find out about it. And that truly, I think Yoliya has the potential to be one of the biggest companies in terms of success that we'll see out of the incubator, because it's just a total game changer when it comes for, to contact lenses, and it will be growing here in the city of Peoria.
Are we shovel-ready for them?
Yeah, that's a great question, because right now, as Mary Ann mentioned, we're working to find, we have some companies that are in the portfolio right now, that in short order, in short timeframe, are going to be in need of some manufacturing space. So we're actually talking to, you know, Maxwell Technologies, to see if some of the space that they control, that they're not using, can be subleased for purposes of interim use, while we figure out a more permanent solution for not only the manufacturing needs, but also, we need to create the type of space that these companies need to be successful in Peoria. That is, that's on the work plan, because we don't want to miss the opportunity with all the hard work and investment that we've made, to not have the space that these companies need.
And this gets back to the three-ring slide, you know, that I put up earlier. One of the things that BioExcel and BioInspire, that continuum is so important, that ecosystem, you cannot be successful unless we do it all, and I think we are doing an amazing job at building all of those pieces. There's no other investment fund dedicated to the biosciences in Arizona. Arizona hasn't been able to get one started. I mean, we don't have a big one, but we got a million-dollar one, and nobody else has been able to do it. And, you know, that was something that BioExcel and our board said had to be done, and while we're doing and managing the incubator, at the same time, we're trying to get that going too, because we know, you know, you just, if we don't have all the pieces in place, the companies will just fall off the cliff at a later point in time. So it's not just one piece of it that's important, you know, when you, when you hear about other incubators, or you hear about other initiatives going on, ask the questions, you know, are they doing proof of concept? Are they seeding? Do they have the downstream capital? Because unless you have it all, those companies will not succeed. And so I think that's the beauty of what we're doing, is we've thought about it all, and we're, you know, again, we're taking baby steps, you know, I'd love to have a $20 million fund, but, you know, I'll be happy with getting a million-dollar fund, and then when Yoliya is successful, you know, then people will be wanting to invest more. So, I mean, you're doing all of the things right, and it's a great foundation to build on.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
I just wanted to say, I have a question, but a quick comment. When I first learned of this partnership several years ago, I was very excited to hear about it, and even more so after hearing your presentation today. It's very, very exciting. I'm especially interested in the workforce development and the internship, and if you could quickly touch on what your plan is for developing that internship program.
Do you mind if I ask Ron to come up and speak to that? Ron is the principal investigator on the grant. And so he's really given a lot of thought to how he wants to develop this, and I think it's really a great approach.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so one of the observations that we made over, actually, it's been several years of doing what we do, is that many of the students, unfortunately, don't have the true practical skills that they really need to be able to just kind of walk into a company and, you know, and get to work and do the productive things they need to do. So, so when we did the internship program, Mary Ann mentions, we had 15 interns, one of the things she didn't mention was, you know, we put out a request for students, and we put the caveat, we don't have any money, we, you know, this is be for free, you're going to spend, you know, your summer, you know, at BioInspire, and we have no money. We got over 200 applicants, okay? And so we had to pare it down and squeeze 15 students in. So we knew there's a huge demand for this, and so of the I-6, for the I-6 portion of this, really, I think the goal is to train a cohort of students that will represent the best that the world has to offer in this area. And so it'll be actually patterned around, focused around a series of projects, that we said two-year grant, and will focus around a series of projects. The projects are decided and determined based on a lot of the activities that we do and the due diligence process of interacting with industry, finding out what the true needs are, and then dovetailing back with the universities, the academic institutions. And this will be ASU, U of A, NAU, and a special partnership with University of California Irvine. Why Irvine? Irvine has one of the largest concentrations of medical device companies west of the Mississippi. They have a series of resources through the University of California system that are unprecedented. We get access to all of that, and we get to bring that here. So our students will be exposed to the best. The projects will be a two-part goal, and I'll have to shorten this up, so you guys can get on with what you have to do. The outcomes of the program is just very simple, twofold. Students that'll come through this program will come out with the practical skills of how to commercialize a product from soup to nuts. So they walk into those companies knowing exactly what they need to do, how to do it, where to do it, and when to do it. So wherever these students end up, hopefully, many of them will be staying here, but wherever they end up, I will expect people to ask, where did you learn to do this? And the word will be through the BioInspire program and the I-6 challenge. That's number one. Number two- Number two, the projects that are actually formed around this are projects that we believe will have commercial potential. So we also expect startup companies to come out of those projects. Those companies will be our future pipeline that'll be going into BioInspire that these students will then be working on as entrepreneurs. And then they will be training the next cohort of students, and on and on and on. So you can see how we will be developing that out over a series of years. And so, so anyway, that's kind of in a nutshell where we're headed with that. And we're always, again, looking for continued support. We're talking with Gore, Medtronic, who have a specific interest in this, who will be participating as mentors and access to the facilities. We'll also be looking for also additional matching funds and things so that we can increase the number and the throughput. You know, the hope is that we'll have, as it said in the grant, the actual commercial, it's a proof-of-concept and commercialization center here. So, so anyway, that's kind of in a nutshell, the vision of that.
Thank you. I look forward to learning more on my tour.
Yeah, and if you want to, any extra time, we can sit down with you. But we've also, this year for the Solutions Challenge, that is identifying unmet needs and how do we match innovation with that need and then get it commercialized. And we have, you know, investors that invest in it. This year, we opened up a category for students. And so it was to expand, to get kids working on things that were actually needed to be worked on. So that's the point. We've now embedded that in the I-6 Challenge grant. And now for next year, thinking ahead, we're already starting to say, how can we bring this to like K, not K through 12, but through junior high, high schools? Is there a way, working with the bio-science high school, working with the high schools, is there a way of getting them engaged that makes sense for their learning process? So this year, we've got two candidates that will, that competed in the Solutions Challenge that made it to the finalists in the wildcard category. And then we've got one investigator whose son is seven, nine-years-old. And he's doing his challenge on flavor paste. It's a flavor toothpaste to make kids brush longer. So we really are trying to get kids thinking about this early on and let them know that the possibilities are there.
Thank you, that was a great presentation. I'm sure we could talk about this a lot longer, but I think we really do need to have a tour and go down and see and touch and feel and talk to the people who are there making it all happen.
And we'll definitely set that tour up.
Thank you, yes. All right. Thanks so much.
That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned to our.